We're calling. We're calling meeting to order. Let's see, who are we gonna seat? And then remember who's.
Larry.
We're gonna seat them for Walter and Rich. Minutes of September. John, good evening. Any changes to the agenda?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay.
There was just the addition down of that Hebron housing to communications. Attachment, did you want that under communications?
Yeah, we can just, we'll just mention that on a communication. It doesn't need to be cited.
Just take whatever comes into communication.
Okay.
But however you wanna do it is fine. The minutes of September twenty fifth, twenty twenty three. We have a motion to accept.
I didn't write one. I was seated and then I was unseated.
Okay, you've noted that.
My barricade.
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we accept the minute as modified. Any discussion? Both in favor? I oppose, abstentions. Very.
I'm assuming we were seated.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything on, are there any members of the public? Online? I don't believe so. Under obvious citizens, we'll pass over that then. Unfinished business, don't import work load and reporting. Hi. Any thoughts from our last meeting? I specifically said to Connie she didn't need to be at this meeting because I wanted to have a chance to discuss this. As a commission, what we heard at our last meeting. And then I did ask her to reserve time for our, to be at our next meeting, really need to work out the technical issues or ask her to be here in person. It was, it was not workable and hopefully they've gotten to the bottom of the technical issue that prevented the soon interaction. I, I did have a conversation with Connie about the meeting and I'll share that with you, but I'd much rather hear what everyone else has to say.
I think just having her in the meeting and asking if that's what it was extraordinarily important. I think we can't do any oversight at all without, without her interaction. I think that was a first step. We just need to build upon.
Okay.
So that was my impression of it.
Any other thoughts?
I think it'd be really helpful for her to have her modify information she gave us to include as many dates as possible.
Yeah.
For any, any current actions.
Okay.
There were few sort of generic dates that were put in, but I think. I recognize some of those things from a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
Somewhere three years ago. I think it's important to see what the history is of something.
Okay, so we will, uh, where will we seated for Walt to being seated for Tom earlier?
Sorry for being late, those.
No problem. Well, we went through the minutes. I thought that the, uh, the last one is probably the big improvement for what we've seen a year ago. But it had, it had dates and, uh.
Had some dates, but most of the dates were recent dates.
Yeah.
There's some instances of those violations that have been on there for a long time and now dates weren't there.
Yep.
So I think it's important to have those dates and see.
You asked for that.
Yeah.
That's the right one. Ask again. I didn't make that comment. We were, Walter brings up this speed. Uh, we've approved the minutes of the last meeting and we're in unfinished business, only important workload and reporting. I mentioned that I had met with Connie. Uh, prior to this meeting, just to kind of review what happened at the last meeting. And was looking to get everyone's perspective on. What her comments were to us and our interaction with her at the last meeting. So I'd love to just get that out in the air for us to discuss. And the other, anything else? Just, so let me tell you what my conversation with Connie was. I, I did say this to her. I said, I felt you handled yourselves well in the meeting. I anticipated. Quite, I think even more aggressive questions from the commission than what she got. And I didn't anticipate getting quite as much information as we did get. Uh, it was really enlightening to see what her total workload was. Uh, in terms of numbers of different types of, of things that she's worked on, numbers of permits, number of open enforcement cases. It was really interesting about the nutrient, so here what should her perspective was like the nutrient allocation table because. I respect her perspective on it, but ultimately it gets down to. We wrote the regulation and we're in charge of enforcing it. And I think she's coming from a different place to enforce it than our understanding was and has been on an ongoing basis. Clearly the regulation was written and in the, in the review to the regulation, it was written intended to make it homeowner friendly. So they wouldn't have to go to a professional engineer. Connie overwhelmingly disagrees that it's user friendly enough for the average consumer to. Delve into and do on their own. And so she feels the responsibility. To an essence, do that for them. Uh, do most of the design and planning and the analysis. And I. We could discuss that tonight. I'd rather plant the seed and, and think, have you all think about it for a future discussion because I don't agree with her on that. But I respect that. She was making a conscious decision to do it that way. And she said, in the grand scheme of things, she doesn't really spend much time in the course of a year. Doing nutrient allocation work. That the vast majority of what she's doing is permitting. And I think a question would arise, let's dig deeper into the time she spends permitting. Uh, and, and the way the review is done. Uh, because I think we all have some concerns about the process there in the office. But I don't question her intent at all. And like I said, I. I think she needs a lot more to say from us and we need more interaction. Just the revelations that surfaced at our last meeting. Those alone. Really lead me to the conclusion that we need to interact with her more and have more give and takes with her. We need to hear about the problems she faces as a zoning enforcement officer, both. In review and, and, uh, uh, enforcement. So that we can better understand the scope of what we need to do in our function here. And that's, thought a lot about this since our last meeting. Do not question her intent or her effort. I. I just wanna make sure that we have control over the direction she's going. It is a real positive thing to require unwritten complaints. It does may cost intention among neighbors, but it makes the process. Somewhat manageable, uh, going from completely unruly without a, a written complaint. And it, and it's incumbent if somebody has a concern about the regulation being enforced. Our process, you know, can't be afraid to stand up for what's correct and if not.
Can I ask you, um, from the conversation you had with her? Who does she report directly to?
I didn't answer your question, but it's always been my understanding that she reports directly to Mark Walter.
Okay.
No questions whatsoever in my mind.
So that, so with that said. What she does, how she does it, what priorities she has against Mark.
I don't know. That's a good question to ask and get an answer to.
Why isn't it? Because a, a big takeaway I got from what went on in.
No, I said it is. I, I say this.
I think it's why the big takeaway I got from it, from the last meeting was, and I gotta tell you there. I don't, I can see that there's some, we're missing, we're not firing out all cylinders here. And, and we have a CEO. Who's. Got a ton of stuff on it. Like I think we determined that last time they were together. But what she decides is a priority is, is a big challenge because the. Her priorities are, her time is getting gobbled up by things that are not. Maybe what we feel is her, her boundary objective. So maybe the, maybe to get her somehow or another. Figure out who's giving her direction. See what direction she's getting. And we, we could take, and we could take a position we did last time we were together and we could just keep miraging her with. I mean, what we did was an assault. Honestly, I gotta say, and I'm, I'm shy about saying it. She was assaulted this last two, two weeks ago. And we could continue to do that to her until she just throws in the towel and jumps off, but. Don't, don't get me wrong. I'm, I'm saying if we do that. And maybe it'll be. The right thing? I, I personally don't think so. But if. We have to fill her shoes. I gotta tell you, I don't think it's gonna happen really easy. And we may go a very long time without a CEO or someone who's way worse at this. Who has way less training or classes, way more. We have to think about that. We really have to.
I suspect that she doesn't have any direction. I think she's working on her own and setting her own plan.
That's, and that's maybe the biggest problem. And I think the bigger problem too, that we don't know. And that's where these conversations and conversations with our, with her directly. I mean, we need to determine that. We don't know what we don't know. And my sense is exactly what you're saying is that she's working in a vacuum. She's prioritizing things the way that she wants to prioritize them or feels that she needs to prioritize them. That's not good for her and that's not good for the town either. So if it's a situation of direction and assistance. That would come to light with, with more conversations, but again.
Well, the other thing is to expect Mark Walter to be her supervisor. Is a bit of a stretch because he's not the train planner or, or zoning enforcement person. He's the town administrator. He has a raw view of what each person does, but doesn't know nuts and bolts of what Connie or, or his CEO should be doing.
What he'll do is he'll direct her where his phone calls. Which is.
Or at least if we said so, if we were to set. Put some priorities together and say, this is where you should be spending your time, then he could enforce that.
Yes. So yeah, not saying other ones.
I just wanna say something to frame what we're saying. The oversight of zoning enforcement is ours as a commission. So from that standpoint, we're her boss and it's up to us to interact with her and ask her to be interacting with us. So we understand what the scope of her work is and her approach and give her guidance. In terms of. Administrative oversight, I'm talking about pure administrative, not zoning enforcement. That's Mark Walter. Um, you know, and John is our town planner, but they're peers. They're not, John doesn't oversee Connie. Connie doesn't oversee John. So that, and there's a clear responsibility, as I understand it, for us to oversee zoning enforcement. So. Well, we took the first step. And, and you felt it was an assault and I felt it was.
Frustration, right?
No, no, I understand.
Intention or bad.
No, I understand that.
And I'm sure it could be perceived that way.
It was, we had some frustration. Tough moments that quickly deescalated because I think we, we. We're finally getting some information that we were dead for. And that's the reason I sat down with Connie to tell her that I feel you and handled yourself well because she could have. Handled the interaction in a way that didn't lead, that lead us to that. Kind of understanding with her that this is a process we need to interact on, on an ongoing basis. And in all fairness to her as a town employee, it's up to us to have, give her clear guidance. And, and clear oversight. We haven't done that. So there's no question in my mind that we do need to meet with her on a somewhat regular basis. Even when we feel everything is running smoothly, but I don't question her intent whatsoever. I don't question her desire to be a professional performing individual. But Bobby brought it up. Well, what she prioritizes, I don't know if he brought it up, well, those are well-put expressions about. The things that I, I think we need to have a better focus on overseeing. And I'm picking my words very carefully because I don't wanna be critical. Because if there could be any criticism in the past is that we didn't oversee with enough energy.
Why doesn't she report the town planners? Because we interact regularly with the town planner. So if that would be a.
John, I would ask you to weigh in when you hear a question like that. It's my understanding that Connie doesn't answer to you. She can go to you as a peer for guidance, this, but a professional mutual guidance, but there's no, um. Definition that, that you oversee the zoning enforcement.
Yeah, that's, that's absolutely correct. And, and in, insofar as. Um, my time at town hall is, is even more limited than Connie's. Um, it's a, it's a more difficult, even, even if it were structured this way, which it's not, it's, it's can be a difficult. Sort of supervisory or reporting relationship. Um. And it's, yeah, I, the, the. Role of, and I was gonna sort of jump in on this. So now that I have the floor, I'm just gonna roll with it. But, um. Zoning officer across many, many towns, maybe even across most towns, is a tricky sort of. Between the cracks. Situation in that obviously she is appointed by you, the Planning and Zoning Commission, to interpret and enforce your regulations. She is, um, a town hall employee and, and her, you know, um. Salary and, and management is, you know, under the auspices of the chief administrative officer, which is Mark. Um. The, I think the way, I think the best way that it works is, um. You guys have regular communication and check-in. Ideally, in conjunction with Mark. Um, because he is the only one of us who is there every day. And, and importantly, is the one that probably gets as many direct complaints. Um, as she does in terms of things that, that, that are, that are awry. In town and, and relays those probably down to her. And so has the best. Ear to the ground, um, about. You know, ongoing problems or hot button things or, you know, um. So, you know, I think in an ideal world, there would be some sort of regular check-in. That, that coordinates between the, the commission itself and Mark. Um. To, to hear what Connie's dealing with and to help. You know, rebalance and prioritize, you know, as, as far as. Um. You know, again, and, and her job, you know, broadly speaking is, as I said, to interpret and enforce. Um, and, and a lot of times that's, you know, a, a constant rebalancing. Of, you know, maybe big projects that need review and permitting on the front end. And, you know, hot button. Uh, you know, I'm getting fifteen calls a day, complaint sorts of things. So it, it's a, it's a case of. You can very easily have, have the stuff that you'd like to work on, you know, triaged by a, a series of squeaky wheels. Or frankly, you know, squeaky wheels that are complaining to Mark or the selectmen. That, hey, you gotta get out there and do something. So, so things get thrown onto the, the zoning officer's plate and sort of reprioritized on the go. Um, but that's why, you know, to. If there are, if there are sort of long-term priorities that planning and zoning wants to see in terms of. Uh, you know. Routine inspections of, of projects in progress or, or recently permitted stuff to make sure that erosion sedimentation is in place or whatever the priority might be. It's, it's good to have a regular check-in on stuff like that. But otherwise, you know, barring, barring supervision by. A barring supervision by Mark. Um, you know, it's the stream of applications and complaints that sets her priority. And, and the regulations, you know, um, sets her framework. Um, so I, you know, there's, there's, there's plenty to do without. Sort of additional input, but if certain things need to be prioritized within the scope of the regulations or, or. Enforcement tasks, it's important to have that check-in ideally coordinated and I'll, I'll stop there.
So the balance of my conversation with Connie centered around, and this is more of an example. You know, did you, uh. I, I asked her about. Lack of enforcement of the reg, of regulations. And I just wanna be fully transparent. Um, we have a subcommittee that's come up with, uh, regulations that are gonna. That, that, that were the result of the subcommittee meetings and. There was some concern that was expressed to me over why she's not enforcing some things that might be covered by those regulation reviews. He said, well, I do that with everybody. It's not just because Justin has a, um. Uh, so, something that's pending that may be resolved by a regulation modification. It has nothing to do with being a member of the commission. She said, if I think that something is gonna change, that would change the way I, I'd rule on something. I'd give it a little time before I enforce it. Uh. I, I tried to cover all, all the grounds on issues that were out there with us. Uh. I, I'm gonna say this again strongly. I don't question her intent. I, I've known her for some time. I've sat together with her all day long, multiple times at the legal conferences in Middleton before COVID. The bar, bar, uh, conferences and spoken with her at Langford. She's, she's a very intelligent, very sincere, very dedicated person. Um, is very, very careful about the way she approaches. Decisions on how to enforce regulations. I may not agree with her on that. And I say that with a lot of respect, but I, I may not agree with her. You know, I've gone through my own. Interaction with her on, on personal projects and do I think she's. I think she's completely ethical. And completely straightforward. And she, she just had a different perspective than I would. And I think it's important for us to understand what her perspective is in every way so that we can oversee the enforcement. And this was the first step, getting her to come to the meeting. And I appreciate from all of you, you, you think that it was kind of an assault wall. If I, I'm using the correct words. I didn't think it was quite that. I didn't want it to, to digress. To be that. I wanted it to be an aggressive conversation. Because we clearly feel, all feel we need to do something different about enforcement. And I thought getting it on the table and discussing it was a good first step. And I, I look at two weeks ago as a good first step. And then two weeks from now, I'd like her to be back here to discuss things I'd hope to come up with. If we don't come up with some conclusions that we'd like to discuss with her at this meeting, then I'll defer for, till our next meeting after that. When she's here as a zoning enforcement officer, I wanna have a productive meeting where we discuss what's going on, what the future should bring, the way processes are. Are approached with, with the way she does things as a zoning enforcement officer. And I wanna give her clear guidance from the commission. And I think we're gonna get a much better result on an ongoing basis with, with the communication. Pathway a little bit.
Shouldn't some of us be? I assume she has a job description?
It's very general.
All right. It seems like that's another, another avenue which we have to. Describe what is we expect and to get at least some sense of priorities.
I, I don't think the, a job description being, um, hyper-specific would change where we are on this. I mean, if I'm wrong, please jump in. I, I. I, I think that the job description we have that's out there is sufficient. I think that we've been underperforming as a commission and I'll take the responsibility for that. It's up to us if we've had questions to approach it differently and raise the bar of interaction with her. So that we can have a free flowing conversation. And we started that. And we're all discussing things in a way that I appreciate. I didn't, this. It's important to just look at the job function and the processes and the methodology of enforcement and the, uh. Understanding of the phases of enforcement and give guidance where that is sent to area. And I think we're gonna get a much better result. Now as far as. You know, the specifics of enforcement and does, do things happen in a certain sequence that, that are near automatic or very uniform? I think we gained a better understanding as to why it doesn't quite happen that way. But I think that maybe with more guidance, maybe we can free up enough time so that it becomes more systematic.
She's only part time, right?
Correct.
Twenty hours.
Sixteen hours budgeted, occasionally rising to twenty.
Cause there looks quite, I think she has enough time.
Yeah.
That's another discussion. I, there's a couple of things that I wanna talk about. Um. One, I, I would take a second. There was an assault. I don't appreciate it. I, I worry, but I think. At least from my perspective, I, I expressed some frustration. Because I, I got the sense that there was some unrealistic or unrealized expectations. I had expected certain things to be happening. Which I didn't get a feel that she was doing. I. I know a little bit about what she does, what she should be doing. I've. I've been, I've experienced that in my profession for forty-five years. So I, I do understand what I think she should be doing. And I did got a sense that she wasn't doing or wasn't setting priorities the way I would expect them on these. Second. So I, I expressed some frustrations and that, and that may be what you're talking about, Paul, is this.
Oh, that's kind of any specific thing.
The tone, the tone.
The tone. And, and there were, you know, certain members of the commission that were a little bit more aggressive with it than others, frankly. And, and it is what it is, but my, my point is. And, and I, I gotta tell you, go around the table here. Who interacts with her on a daily basis? Who interacts with her on a weekly basis? I'm gonna ask you a question.
She said for your, she's read for your range for the last four years.
Uh, who interacts with her even on a monthly basis?
Right.
Okay. And then let me ask you this.
I, I.
But, and you're, and you're the spirit. Okay. So there's the answer. Fact of the matter is we all have something to say about what she's doing wrong. But a month goes by that some of us don't have any interaction with her. We have no input except. That some people at this table have violations that she's responding to. That's an interaction that's biased. We have, we have to look at. What she's doing, how poor the direction is she's getting, and we need to fix it or have to fix it.
Right.
Right? So, so I think that's where we should be going.
Right. We should, we should, we should be able to understand. What are typical work habits and, and, and set certain priorities. Within her workload, her capabilities. That we would expect. In other words, if we want, if we want, uh, enforcement to be the number one priority and inspections to be the number two priority or whatever. I think it's, the burden's on us to, to explain to her, this is what we expect. She can come back and say, well, that's unrealistic because I think that should be this. It's gonna be a given ten.
How's that we do that with the establishment? Or can we do that with the farmers?
Well, I think there's a subcommittee that should be put together that could deal with it. What, what we did. The, the other thing that I, I, just before. I get a sense. And again, I may be wrong, but I get a sense that Connie doesn't like to do enforcement. Okay? She's not.
Let's find that out.
Well, let's find that out. That's my gut feel. It's really not a pit bull. She's not a person that's gonna go out and aggressively do enforcement. Which is, which is part of the problem.
Maybe, maybe the biggest problem.
Exactly. So that's, that's my gut feel.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Excuse me. I just. This, this is, I'll give you just a second, John. I just wanna frame this that if we're gonna start talking about personnel. Perspective. I think we should do it in executive session. I don't think we should do it in an open discussion. So. Specific things related to Connie's performance. If we wanna have a, a, a discussion for the sake of the, the respect of her privacy, I think we should do that in executive session. We would need to make that an agenda and schedule that for the future. So I don't, I've tried not to analyze other than to say that I felt she handled herself well in the meeting. That was just a personal observation.
Are you saying that this conversation is inappropriate?
I'm saying it, it's appropriate, but not unless we're in the executive session. We shouldn't get into an employee review. John, I'm sorry. I didn't, I just wanted to get that out there before we went much further.
Backing up then, backing up then, we should.
I was, I was gonna say the same thing is that you really, I. I was, I was gonna say the same thing is that you really, I it would be inappropriate for you to discuss job performance. In a, in a public setting without the subject person here and and it would be better to do it in the executive session.
But going back to, going back to the overall consensus is I. I think we all. Need to be more involved in what our expectations are, more involved with her. And and negotiate with her, negotiate with her, establish a sense of priorities that would. Meet our our expectations and also that she would agree with. Really agree that she may say, no, I don't think that's the number one priority. I think it should be something else. So it's gonna be a bit of a negotiation.
Yeah, I. Just what's called a communication that hasn't existed.
Right.
It, we need to be communicating with her as as a member of of our. Our process and and our, in essence, a de facto member of this agency. But any specific comments on whether she's doing a good job or a bad job? I think we've probably gone a little farther in this meeting than we we should. I think the world of Connie on a personal basis and I know her intentions are good. So I. I just, just like if I were critical of anyone here, I would do it with. Well, I don't feel I have a right, but if I, if there was something I wanted to say, I would say it to you privately. Not in the meeting, it's just the same thing. And in 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 terms of what John said, I I I concur. So if that's something we would like to do, we need to plan it. Uh but my high priority is at our next meeting, if we uh come to a consensus. Is to really discuss the workload with with her in conceptual terms. And get into more detail about the open cases and just get to an understanding. If there's anyone who feels that. They want to address job performance, let's reserve that for a private meeting in executive section with Connie. If if we.
I absolutely agree, but I I gotta ask you, as far as communication goes, we meet every two weeks. For the last how many months we haven't even done that. And so, so if we took Connie's time, that she says sixteen or eighteen hours a week in that neighborhood. And she was to participate with us for even a half hour of any given week. But within a given two weeks, that's equivalent to fifteen minutes a week. How it would be, it would be, it would be really valuable to expand. Does anybody disagree with?
We can't do it any other way. That has to be a prerequisite to being able to. That's kind of what's frustrating me about the conversation, right? We've gotten. Part of the way there is a very productive conversation that needs to be scheduled to take place on a regular basis. Because we need the opportunity to ask her questions and hopefully eventually we get to a point where it's maintenance of the questions that we had from the previous meeting. To get prior reports and then any other questions that we might have. But the work, to me, this is two-pronged. That's one prong. The second one is, we have to have some understanding. Of what's going on in her day to day. We are all speculating right now. We don't know. She's working in a vacuum. That's not her fault. Okay, uh and I I agree with you. I think it comes down to us as far as the oversight piece. But we need to have expectations in direction. I wouldn't use the word negotiation so much as. An agreement, it's kind of the same thing, but an agreement on what the expectations are and then enforcement of the expectations. And and not in a punitive way, but in a way of. This is what we expect. This is what's going. To a certain point, you can only nurture and support to a certain point until someone either refuses to do the job or they're capable of doing the job. And we have not gotten anywhere near close to understanding if that's the case.
Right, so what I propose on an ongoing basis is. Approximately every month, schedule her to interact with us during a meeting. And in the ultimate meeting date that we discussed what went on at the prior meeting. And formulate a very specific strategy for the next meeting to discuss. And I don't know that we're at a point where we should be interacting in a an executive session to review. Her performance until we have a track record of. Uh and I'm not talking about a formal review, just interact with her about her performance. Until we. Get our feet on the ground with ongoing communication. And to that end, I I did attempt to reach Mark this afternoon about three o'clock and. I didn't get anyone in the office. I didn't leave a message. I just didn't want to talk about what was brought up about um ongoing oversight. And and I did want to express to Mark Walter. How appreciative I was with Connie's reception to our question. She was very professional and forthright and I gave a lot of good information at the last meeting and. I hope the result of this conversation is, we realize we have a good person there that needs more oversight from, not oversight, more. In interaction and input from us about what's going on. The other point that I made with her when I sat down with her. Or that she made to me, I I let's take it, it's it was a two-way conversation. We talked about a specific. Element of the proposed regulation that's gonna come up a little bit later. I don't wanna supersede that presentation. Just talking about, she was talking about the idea that we might be changing our. Structure regulations, setbacks, sizes and and zoning oversight for accessory structures. And. There was clear impression that I got from her that the ten by twelve foot or hundred and twenty square foot existing structure limitation. Uh to to not need to do a nutrient allocation. On plan, a full one for the, was on the small side. That something a little bigger, most people would like a little bit bigger shed than ten by twelve feet. And the idea that. The nutrient allocation analysis is triggered by things that could be importantly addressed in other ways. I go, we need to hear that from you. And there's been no mechanism for us to hear that from Connie. I said, we need to hear from you on a regular basis, what enforcement actions or permitting. Actions are going on that you feel need attention, like the idea that uh compressors. Need a zoning review, uh if you're not a compressor or a generator. If you're putting a freestanding generator, triggers a zoning review. For ten square feet, if you have a a a compressor on attached to your house for a mini split says no. There's a zoning review and so many things like that that we could streamline just to make life easier, not just for Connie, but for the rest of the town. You know, if we can take and streamline our regulations and we don't want to eliminate certain things, but maybe we do, you know, there's. There's just areas of review that we don't need to be involved with.
An important thing for her to give us feedback on is.
Vera, Vera's been quiet, so you got your floor.
It's amazing, don't you think? Why are they quiet? Um I think if we had been a couple, just a couple comments. Um I think if we had been getting the regular reports on a regular. Basis with the dates like Bob suggested, we would have had a much better idea of what was going on. Where it maybe wouldn't get to the point that anybody thought that they were being attacked. I thought everybody held it together really pretty well, so I'm I'm. Opposite of of what Walt thinking was. Um and if we had gotten uh more timely and and more often reports. It would certainly be a section of the bottom where. This this other information is, you know, a summary of, well, this is going on and this is going on. And if if we had gotten on that a regular basis, we could be a lot more uh proactive and reactive. To what the community wants. And changes such like you just mentioned, as far as the the mini split and the generator and the size of the shed and I'm. I was always um thought that for the most part. Yeah, we're not really somebody's boss. Um what we can suggestions on how to make everything work a little bit better. Um I had done that with Mark. Um a couple of times regarding this um and I have. I think I've seen Mark maybe at one of our meetings before, so that might be another component that we need to add. Besides Connie being present or uh you know, zooming in. Um it was my understanding, like most employment situations um that a lot of people have a six-month review. And it's not necessarily to say, you know, you're doing bad at this, you're doing good at this, but also to get the employees' input. As far as how can we help you do your job better? What problems are you having? And I was under the the impression that we were doing that as a town. That that was something that um the administration. Was doing.
That's generally done once a year with a um in informal re uh interaction with. On planning and zoning matters, the town plan, the town administrator will interact. With me about our perspective on job performance. More for the town planner, but really less input about the zoning enforcement agent. I'm not sure who would interact. On the zoning enforcement agent. I've never been asked about Connie's performance from the the administrative's office.
I, there's, there's a separation of uh roles here. I think we as the planning zone. Commission set policy as far as Connie's concerned. Mark Walter is more um in charge of operational issues, day-to-day operations. Does she show up in time? Does she do time, does she practice her time clock, does she do, you know, those types of things? Those are operational issues. But the policy has to come from us. You know, and we we're the ones that are in charge of what she should be doing. On a day-to-day basis as far as policy. Uh Mark has no idea or has some idea, but it really boos us to to. Work with her to determine exactly what she's doing on a day-to-day basis.
I think we can get a handle on this is what I'm trying to say. I think we made a good first step here. Taking a long time to get there. I apologize that it didn't. Get accelerated into where we were two weeks ago. Prior to them, but it was a very positive first step. And it's just important that our zoning enforcement agent understands what our priorities are and our perspective is and. That that there's ongoing guidance and I think they're all aware of that and that's going to happen on an ongoing basis. And I, let's, let's give our process that our newly started process here time to work. Before we assess how well we're doing. Let's just constantly tweak it. Let's talk about it. Uh what I would like to do is get back to Connie and ask her to be at our next meeting. With more detail with the the um. Origin date of all of the interactions that are on the list. And if any one of you see, get a spreadsheet out to us that we can look at that information and I'd rather have it be expansive than. Compact enough to fit on one sheet. And so I'd rather see all the notes when we look at it in spreadsheet form and email that to us. And if there are things that we feel um that we have questions about that are not on that list, that we feel have been ongoing enforcement actions. Let's bring them up and and Vera, let's be as specific as we can about addresses, uh you know, you know. You and I know that, you know the town better than I do.
Well, I just, I just, I did get a lot of opposition and and I have, I have spoken with Connie several different times and I. I tried to be more specific. Yes, I didn't have an exact address, but. If you're on Route Six and sixty-six east and you're going one way and you go on Route Six to Hartford. And I mean Columbia is only so big. And you can't find three or four MAFBO school buses sitting on the side of road. You know, I thought, I thought that was pretty, you know, okay, you don't need an exact address.
Have one standard for everybody.
But.
It's gonna be a specific address. You have a concern about it, um this going on at this address. And keep it focused so that there's nothing nebulous about.
I had gotten, I had gotten. Opposition. Continually up until this last. Email that I did send. And now that things have become what I would call more serious. And trying to straighten all this out. That and and I did compliment her, if you remember the last meeting, that that was the first and only. Time that I had did get a response to the complaint that I made in writing and followed up. And it was a lengthy description that far is what she found, which was great. And I did tell her that last meeting. Um but I was just. I guess disheartening, I guess is a better word, that it takes. I was good to go in the right direction. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying it's disheartening to the fact that you have to go through this amount of time. To get to that point.
Well, hopefully we don't have to do this, this, this deep dive on this on an ongoing basis.
Right.
If we constantly keep our nose focused on. Enforcement on an incremental basis each, every, you know, once a month with Connie. And she could interact with us for fifteen or twenty minutes online or in person. And we can discuss it and let's start a process that we're not gonna let up. John, I would. Request and I would request that on every agenda, we have enforcement as an agenda item. And if there's nothing to add to it, great. And if there's something, but enforcement on an ongoing basis and.
I'm 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 not sure that's right. I think it should be the Z E O report. Because there may be other issues that she wants to bring. For example, she doesn't agree with unregulated instructions being on two and square feet. She should bring them to our attention at that time.
Okay.
Cause that's the only time we have to interact with her. Hey, Walt, hey, we don't see her.
That's great.
For maybe a little something on the bottom. These are the issues I've been facing.
Yeah, John, let's not call that enforcement. Let's call it the Z E O report. And I will be interacting with Connie on a regular basis. I did feel it was important. To to face-to-face have a discussion with her about the meeting and I did do that. And I think we were going in the right direction here. So at our next meeting, I would ask her to just pop in. And and I would like a more detailed spreadsheet. And I I said, I, we really need to hear from you what regulations you're enforcing that you feel should be modified. They don't make sense to you on a regular basis. And that was so, she agreed. And so I said, let's just open up the communication flow about that.
It would be a real good opportunity for her to help us regarding um. Any problems with our regulations that the public is having.
Or you could put it this way, would you give us a chance to help for us to help her?
Right.
So.
So we're gonna be able to accomplish that. I mean, so what's your intention to work with her one-on-one? Because to me, with the, with as. Many issues as there has been. At least for a short period of time, and for for my impression, that would be something that we would. Have to work with her on because it's not only, I totally agree, she needs to give us information and feedback both directions. That's one thing that's sorely lacking. The other thing is just understanding and helping her with a process to prioritize what she's doing. Is that. It's everything and I and I'm uncomfortable with. The focus. Am I uncomfortable and don't take me the wrong way, I'm gonna say this, you have to listen to what I'm saying. I'm uncomfortable with the focus on enforcement. Because it's a running joke in town that you do not fully become a resident of the town of Columbia until you're on zoning enforcement list. Okay, lots of people have had interactions. I'm one of them currently, right? But I know I'm not the only one. I want as much protection for the people who are on the list because of the countless complaints that I have gotten. From people who are on the list who feel that I have had not been treated fairly. Now. What that comes down to is exactly what we've been talking about. An expectation of product process, an expectation of prioritization. And I'm just afraid that if we completely rely on her coming in. And having those discussions during the meetings alone. And we're not working with her through a subcommittee, at least for a short period of time, I don't know that it will be as effective. That's my one concern. Could be completely wrong. But that's what I want to express.
Let's. I hear you. I to form another subcommittee of three people. When we have one uh working on regulations. Let's give the interaction a chance. Let's, let's go a couple meetings down the road, interacting with her. Um she she's been operating in a, in a vacuum for so long, vacuum of interaction with us. Let's start to interact and see where that goes.
If it's, if it's something that's, I get where you're coming from, the list. That's, that's a, that's uh some, an issue that's been used. All over the world for different reasons that the list concept, so it's kind of a spooky thing. And for somebody to be on the list if they're not in violation or if they're unjustly being targeted or something like that, I get what you're saying. But if somebody's. Been reported and somebody is got a legitimate violation. How else would we learn about them unless they're on the list?
It's not the point that they're on the list. It's the point on what process has been followed. I totally understand.
Because it's, it seems to me that the concept of a list is troubling to you.
No, no, I said, no, I mean, if if you're in violation or let me, let me actually go further than you are. If you're even suspected of being. If you're even suspected of being in violation, you should be on the list. But there should be a process that the person who's on the list, don't fix it on the list, not on the list. Don't, i- i- if the person is on a zoning enforcement, any portion of the zoning enforcement action and they've been accused of something, they need to know what process to expect and how to either rectify it or, or.
Respond to it.
Respond to it. And, and absolutely, this is what we probably need to have more of a discussion in the executive sector. But these are the, these are some of the, the problems and I don't mean to get into the minutia or micromanage it. But we need to identify those problems. Those are the problems. Those are a big part.
So it's not the idea of the list or that somebody be on the list. It's how do they get off the list?
Well, what process do they follow? Instead, let's say.
No, I'm with you.
Yeah, I think you're, I think in essence you're right, yeah.
But, but I'm not sure if somebody should be on the list unless they're a legitimate violation.
That's a problem.
Well, that's the type of.
Like they shouldn't automatically go by a list.
I want to move us on from this, this issue. We spent enough time on it tonight. We have other stuff to discuss. I, just one last thought. I don't mean to, uh, to overtalk. But I, I think that somebody shouldn't be on the list unless she's looked into and thinks there's a possible violation.
That's my.
I don't, just because somebody made a complaint, she should have a process where she looks into it within seven days or something and
Right.
and determines whether she thinks there's enough reason to, that there's a very likely violation or whether there's an ongoing enforcement action. The idea is she thinks that somebody might be in violation because there was a complaint and get on the list, not a chance, should we see her? No, that's, that's something that before, that just shouldn't be on there. But. Let's, let's, let's talk about this some more, but you know, we're, we're going on fifty minutes, forty-five minutes of this.
Yeah, I don't know who determines how long you should stay on, stay on the subject.
Well, kind of, yes, it would be me, but we have a meeting.
I just wanted to, um, I tried to get through on that last meeting. I think it would be really helpful too, if we find out exactly, not, you can't do it exactly. But on a regular basis, how much time she's spending on a permit, how much time she's spending if there's people on the, the late allocation on report? And how much time does she spend on, on the, on the enforcement so that we can get an idea?
Face with this once a month. I think we can, I, we can delve into all those questions that we feel are important. So bring them up again in our next face to face with her.
Okay.
If she doesn't have the information, it's a process.
Yeah, we should, we should come next time. I just, we just, I think maybe if we get a handle on how much time she's spending on, on each one, then that maybe.
I understand.
Help us figure out where she, where she can sell.
I understand. I'm trying to move us on from this. If you feel we need to delve into those, bring those up when we're face to face with her.
Next time.
Okay, next time, yeah. No, uh, does anyone mind that I move you guys on from this? Okay. Uh, anything on your new business, John?
Uh, nothing on a new business.
Okay, uh, regulation revision. Uh, who's gonna take this? You, Dustin?
Yeah, I can take it if you want.
Okay.
Okay, so we've, the subcommittee has worked on up to this point, three regulation revisions that we would like to move forward, um, and obviously get everyone's input on two or three are in the packet. And I'm gonna, if it's okay with you guys, I'm gonna turn around just a, a little bit. Uh, so there's the eight point one, eight point two, eight point three, which we've been working on on the agenda. The, I'd like to start with eight point two. So the section fifty-one point seven minor modifications of approved special permits. So there's uh, just to give you the background and I'm usually self-conscious of not speaking too long and taking too much time, but I'd like to try to include this in some detail. Uh, the guys get free as well as. Like the back of the table, can I?
I'm sorry, which section are you referring to?
Uh, fifty-one point seven. So it's in the packet towards the, it's actually the. Yeah, this is the short, short piece here. So. Okay, so where does this derive from? Um, is if we approve a permit under a special permit application, obviously everything goes in the land record. So we could be uh, major suggestion that we have or modifications. It could be minor things like business hours, um, and things like that. So with minor mo- modifications, the way that the section is written currently, the um, person who has the business would have to come back to us and go through the entire special application permit process again. So they'd have to pay the fee, go through the public hearing to make any changes to, to the special permit. So if someone comes in and we originally had a concern about, okay, your hours should be ninety-five and they say, well, it's been a year and there's been no issues. Can I go from seven to six? They would have to go through the entire special permitting process again. What this allows is for minor changes um, to a site plan or a special permit. Uh, they can be acceptable with the writ approval of the planning and zoning commission, provided such change shall in no way affect the overall layout. Time here. Environmental impact or nature of the site plan, special permit, applicants may apply for minor modifications approved by the commission by writ request through the town planner or directed to the commission. It allows them an avenue to make reasonable changes, which will help obviously the people operating under these special permits. So they don't have to go through the whole, whole special permitting process again.
Pay the fee again.
What's that?
And pay the fee.
And have to pay the fee again and have, and really it's the fee, it's the delay, it's the.
The time.
The time, right?
Time is a big time.
Right, so we wanna be friendly to businesses and not artificially discourage them when they wanna make a, a minor change. So that was the first one, uh, which I would open up to any discussion or any.
Can I throw out an example that I brought up at the last meeting? When Gates had, was basically withdrawing back from the road, some of the proposed, uh, not gates, uh, uh, wild motors. And then, but moving closer to a sideline, but still conforming with sideline. And I didn't feel there was a need to come back for a new special permit on that or even a, a formal review by the commission. And think where we have in here, in no way, maybe we want something like not materially. Such to for those words, provided such changes shall in no way affect the overall layout. Well, minor changes could affect the, the overall layout in a very subtle, a very small way. And then we, this would render this not usable in that case. So I think we're trying to give some latitude to make life easier. That, that verbiage in there, I, I have concerns about it. In no way.
Yeah, I, I think that, what, what would you want to mention?
Not materially.
Yeah.
Um.
You could put a minor change in a minor way.
Is this, does this put us in a position where when somebody comes in under the assumption, minor change, and somebody's gonna have to interpret what minor is before it gets to that, oh, boy, it's minor subjective. So somebody, whether it's the applicant or the town planner or the Z E O or Mark Walt says, this is, this is minor to go in and see him, we would still have the opportunity to say, well, you know what? Based on what we have here, I'm not sure as a consensus, we think this is minor. And take it to another course.
Right, we would have that opportunity.
It doesn't just automatically fall into a, a pattern of, of.
This is why they still come to us for approval.
Which is the mechanism they have.
That's the mechanism.
But would it be approve or deny or would it?
Yeah. No, we wouldn't deny it. We would just say it's not minor. You need to go through the special permit process.
Gotcha.
So they would have another avenue.
It's important. It's important.
And then I think we should spell that out in, in a completed regulation and just say that this is an alternative to needing a new special permit.
It gives them another layer of convenience versus inconvenience, I guess is the way to put it. So if they have to go through the special permitting process too, that's, but John has one.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm, I'm just making notes on this. Um, and I think I have two, well, actually now, three potential adjustments to the language here. First is change the, the phrase shall in no way, we wanna say to, shall not materially. That's one. Second.
Or, or you have a suggestion of, of.
No, I, I, I like materially. I, um, but that's a good, as a placeholder. The second question is who determines whether or not this is a minor change? Well, so, and, and I guess, and I guess what I'm trying to do is split hairs between this minor modification of a special permit which would come back before the commission and the sort of change that, that you and I agreed to for the, for the Wild Hyundai site. Um, which was, you know, we determined that it was, you know, basically less than what was approved, you know, less than the full extent of, of their approval. Um, my, my question will be, do we want to allow for some level of essentially planner slash chair sign off of reduction um, to approval? As a, as a, almost as a second, separate category. Um, and then, and that's, so that's the second thing. The third thing is, um, we probably want just a little bit more language of clarification in that second paragraph. Um, where it says, you know, planning and zoning commission shall deny or approve through a majority vote proposed changes. Um, we would say, probably add a clause without requiring a, 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 a full site plan or special permit modification. Our, re- re- reapplication, you know, to make, make it clear that they don't, you know, they're getting a thumbs up or thumbs down without a full process. If that makes sense.
Yes, so, yeah, at the end of the first sentence, adding verbiage to put that, that caveat in there. That, that this is in lieu of having to do that. So it's not formally a denial, it's just saying it needs to go through that uh, higher level of review.
Right.
So we're not denying it. We're just saying that we're not comfortable that it meets a criteria here. And then the question as to what is a minor enough change, change was like as a site plan to allow administrative.
Without approval.
Without coming to us at all. So, and, and that's, that's tough. We just went through this and I, and I went out on a limb and did it because I thought it was so logical and and uh, John, you know, John wasn't comfortable doing it and I, I went in, I, I said, I'll go out, I'll take ownership of this one and I'll go out on a limb saying you're doing less than what they asked for here.
But they're closer to the side here.
They're closer to the side.
So if I was the name, I would reject it to that. Even though it was within setbacks, it still shouldn't, I think should have been reviewed in public.
So it gets down to the question of, which is what this process would do.
I think the, the commission making the ultimate decision, decision is probably where to go because we're gonna be closer to the people. They don't like us, they can vote us out. If we leave that decision to town planner as much as.
Yeah, who decides what's mine and what's not mine?
That's fine. That, okay, that's fine.
Well, John, I want you to weigh in. You know, I, I know that in a commercial setting, you, you have a a, a problem in the field and you need to modify things on the fly. And this rate of action could be very efficient to help, help somebody with a special permit, whether it's a business or an individual. You know, they found a boulder where they were gonna put a foundation. So now they wanna change this special permit to be different. Uh, what's, what's a logical thing that allows them to not come back before the commission to even approve a, a minor change to a to a site plan?
Or for instance, if they wanted to, you know, if they had fencing along the rear yard and they wanted to switch that to, you know, arbor by deplanting. Or they, you know, they had a storage room off the back, uh, you know, a four by six storage room. They decided they don't need it, so they didn't build it. And so now all of a sudden, technically not in compliance with what was approved. But it's, you know, they, they just chose not to build the whole thing. You know, I, I, I like the idea of the, the change in the field clauses. I know a lot of, a lot of uh, regulations have that leeway in them. Um, we could, we could certainly look at adding that.
Just, John, to give context, is that a pretty common occurrence that something like that would happen?
Um, well, I gave you a couple examples. I mean, I think, you know, fencing landscaping is something that happens frequently. If they, you know, if they, they change their mind or they, they feel like they wanted something vegetated rather than having to put up a fence. And, and, and the regulations for, for buffer could be either, you know, so they, they, they're sort of a choose your own adventure and they, they show a fence, but then choose a, a, uh, that, that's not, that's not uncommon. Um, as for, well, you know, choosing not to build the whole thing, yeah, I, I, you know, it's been you know, relatively quiet from a com- commercial construction standpoint, but um, well, I, I actually, I mean, that was really the, the thing in the case of Wild Hyundai is they were lopping several hundred square feet off of what they had originally proposed. Um, because, you know, the cost of construction and they sort of relooked at their internal layout and they could get, you know, enough showroom space and lop off this storage room. You know, why spend the extra twenty-five thousand dollars or whatever it is on that storage space? So you know, they chose to build less than they were actually approved for.
The problem I have is that all of these things we're talking about are special permits, which means a public hearing. Public has the opportunity to hear what's going on and have input. And if all of a sudden, something gets passed through a special permit process and then it's changed, the public doesn't have a chance to weigh in on changes. So I think it's more hard for, for any minor modifications to come back to this board. It's publicly advertised, it's on the agenda, the public can then weigh in. We've been accused of, of doing things without the public knowing entirely what's going on.
But we haven't.
I know, I know. I, I, you're correct, you're correct. But here's an instance where if it's not done in a public setting, the public can say, well, what are you doing behind closed doors? You're giving this guy preferential treatment with minor modifications. You're not giving this other guy's. It, it's not transparent. So you don't, you're.
I think, I think minor, minor modifications should come back to this board.
With, with a caveat though, that I think it's, what you're talking about, John, means a bigger challenge, bigger problem. And I think that's the scope of what we require in some cases for a, for a special permit. So if we require something or they agree to something, I can see John's point. I don't know if he's trying to make that specific point, but if someone agrees to a certain scope and they go below the threshold, not making a change above the threshold of what they agreed to. That would be nice. I see.
But if, but if the configuration changes. Right, if you eliminate a portion of the building, for example, that's one thing. But if you redesign and have something closer to a side yard than was approved, even though the square footage is smaller, I don't agree with that as being an administrative change. I think it should come in front of the public.
I think we can probably, so I, I tend to agree with you. That's why, what I said before. But I think, I think maybe some of the other regulation changes too, when we're looking at what actually requires a special permit, because there's so many things that require a special permit. I think our interaction in, in uh, approving or, or going through the motions with special permits needs to be increased anyway. There's too much stuff on there. So I think yeah, I think if, for, at least for the time being with minor change, it probably should come to us. This is my opinion, but.
Okay, um, so you feel the same way? You know, minor changes, it's always, it don't be involved? And there's no um, need for a new public hearing, no additional fee code, mi- minor changes would come before the commission. You need to do it every two weeks, so.
A minor change has to, still has to, uh, the boss point, still has to, uh, obey the rules. You can't make, oh, we gotta make a minor change. Department's gonna be pushing a thing, say, shrinking, uh, shrinking a side yard, you know, by, by ten feet or something like that. I, that's, that's a major change, it's not.
Well, that's our determination. That's my, that's was my point of when it comes before us, do we have the ability to say, well, you know, and I will feel comfortable, this isn't a minor change?
That, that clearly would be, um, within the realm.
Right.
So you feel that me saying it was okay to go ahead with the change in the plan, extending the side yard was probably something I shouldn't have done.
I know this one's not, which.
I, I, I own my action.
I took ownership of it. John wasn't comfortable making that call on its own.
I don't think we know enough about that.
Yeah, that's really quite close. Yeah.
But it's just like, let's not make that up.
But let's.
But it's one foot closer to the setback line to the U-Haul place.
But it doesn't matter.
Yeah, I know.
No, no, so let, let me just throw out this. If it was originally a special permit, we have uh, multiple criteria that are somewhat subjective to review an application. So that, let's say they take away from a plan. They had four a, a colonial looking structure in a commercial district. We loved it. It had multiple front facing gables. And all of a sudden, they're gonna have a simple roof line there that we think is ugly as all get up. Um.
Are you talking about character now?
Yes. Uh, no, I'm talking about harmony with the neighborhood.
There you go.
Yes.
But we have no design regulations.
Uh, we do have subjective review, uh, the ability to, to subjectively evaluate. Um, but that would be making it. To subjectively evaluate, um, but that would be making it um a a smaller structure. So hence, what would that fall within if we did allow administrator review instead of before the commission? Uh, that would be something that we probably wouldn't be comfortable with and supporting.
That's why I agree on this point.
Okay, so where where is the direction you want to go with this? Is we want? Any even minor revisions have to come before the commission on an ongoing basis?
At this point, I think we should.
Yeah, okay. That's where we want this regulation to settle as we put it out there.
Doesn't require a new permit and new fee though.
And John, that to that point that we're all talking about, when we go through this process. And if there is something that comes to us. That determine that, okay, this is a really minor change. And there's a problem, if we change this and there's a problem, we just need feedback from the town employees, whether that's John or whoever else. Goes back to what we talked about earlier as far as that two way communication.
Okay.
The only concern I would have is that the minor change has to come before the commission. It may mean that whatever project they're working on has to be delayed for two weeks.
Well, that's.
But they're the, they're the ones that are making the change. If they don't want to waste two weeks, then they don't make the change.
I think what this addresses is clear and concise understanding with the public. On the public's part as to what the process is. When they go into a project.
Well, the important thing. Is you get all your ducks lined up before you submit your application. You don't submit the application and then decide, oh, it's too expensive to build, I'm going to make a modification. You do that ahead of time before you submit for planning.
Well, reality too, just think something to think about too is this, this could happen a couple of years down the road. Somebody gets approved, they they're running their business and then they want to make a change. Could be something very minor, like changing the hours. We stipulate your hours have to be X to X, right? So that's, that's another situation that this is trying to address, which is really different than someone in the midst of building out a project.
And that in in some respects is even more important than all the input. Into the project.
Okay.
We'll take that another day.
Okay, all right. I think we got a lot of good feedback on it. Thank you.
Okay, so let's look at the next one. Uh, go to eight point three. Um, I actually see these two things as kind of game center. So same plan versus special perm uses, this is not in the packet. I want somebody to bring up. Third on the screen, uh, section thirty one point three, the. Um, of the regulation was paid for it. But essentially, it's a list, it's like this. It's a list of. Uh permitted uses within a commercial zone uh through special permit inclusion by the commission. In looking at this list, this is part of the problem when it comes to fifty one seven that we just looked at. Is the breadth of oversight that we have felt necessary on the different types of businesses. Some of the, most of these actually, at least in my opinion, and I think that Rick and all that must be free, but we we agree on this, that many of these. Were uncontroversial and really didn't need a special permit. So when we go through the list, um, let me just read through really quick. There's twenty one on here. So daycare centers, public utility buildings. Post office, package stores, outdoor recreation facility. Manufacturing assembly processing operations other than permitted under blah blah blah. Warehousing and distribution, pet boarding, daycare grooming. Um, sand gravel operations, building uses and facilities of the state of Connecticut, federal government and other governmental agencies. Wireless telecommunications facilities, major home occupation and a single, single family dwelling. Clubs, restaurants, convalescent homes, funeral homes, motel. Storage of materials which is dangerous due to explosion, extreme fire hazard or radioactivity, et cetera. Commercial oil propaner gasoline tanks, cannabis establishments and multifamily dwellings. So when we look at these things, it kind of falls into a couple of categories. Uh, some of them are like, uh, should be uncontroversial, like a daycare, public utility building. Um, you know, uh, pet boarding and daycare grooming, major home occupation with existing civil family dwelling, like. Business in the, you know, home, that should probably just be completely removed. So some of these. We feel should be rolled over into a site plan instead of the whole special permit process, which again. Creates the time, the money and the frustration for the applicant in trying to open up a business in a in a commercial zone. Some of these probably should stay on as special permit applications, things like sand gravel operations. Or storage of materials that's dangerous due to explosion, things like that. But there's also things that we could probably combine and we don't have to separate out. So like clubs and restaurants, where those two things are friendly. You know, there's some, some things like that. So the idea behind this is to agree on which. Of these twenty one items can be rolled into a site plan so that the applicant would not have to go through the entire special permitting. Process, uh, and which ones could stay as special permits. And which ones frankly should probably just be removed altogether that we have no jurisdiction over anyway. Uh, federal government buildings, you know, uses of the state of Connecticut, there's things that that we just don't have jurisdiction over. So I. I'll I'll put it up to your thoughts on on that list. Uh, we kind of have highlighted the ones that we felt. Could be rolled into the site plan, but obviously want to discuss it before our commission, excuse me.
So the purpose of this discussion would make life easier for people that would follow this category, I said, would be applying for a permit.
Exactly, yeah.
So number one, daycare center, we we disapproved the daycare center at this entrance to a commercial drive because it was going to be. Housed in the same building as a truck depot. Um, and so not having the ability to. Very thankful that never turned into a a daycare. And so ha- the the fact that we had a special permit for that, something that was probably about. Almost twenty years ago, we turned it down because it was a special permit requirement to say, it's just fully incompatible with what's going on in this area. Because there are some commercial areas that are pure commercial, like retail, that probably be very compatible with it. And other areas that are commercial because it's industrial and that's, that's what we have is some be putting. Whoever wanted to pay the rent in that area, they could have gotten her.
Yeah, and and this was a spirited debate amongst the three of us with that particular one. So I'll give you the countervailing opinion on that. And that is that daycare centers are highly regulated already. And if a big, a person wants to open a daycare center is. Going to be close to a commercial operation or some of the concerns that you guys had, that really at the end of the day is between the daycare operator and. Their customers, which are the parents, you know. I think that one, the the other piece of that too is that was one particular situation. And do we paint all daycare centers because of that one particular situation? So that would just be the counter.
Well, we don't have that many applications for commercial daycare centers in commercial zones. We only have one other one.
Right.
It was in. We we reviewed that. It was next door to an area that had a a gun test firing reach in the basement and. We 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 made sure that they don't do any test firing outside, you know, because it's proximity to a daycare, so.
Who spent it?
What?
They were shooting outside.
They were, weren't, they didn't raise it in. But the point is. Yeah, if we didn't have our regulation, we might have had a very different result. You know, how many regulations do we have on the books that have never come into play in the thirty eight years I've been doing this?
Yeah, and I know you and I are like, kind of disagree a little bit on this one, and I think that's totally fine. I think from from my perspective. I just don't want us to see, I don't want to have an entire category of business that could possibly open up in a commercial zone. Require a special permit because of one really strange thing, you know, at the end of the day. If somebody opens up a daycare center and and it's kind of. With within that scope of concern that you have and they open it up anyway, nobody wants to do business with them. It's kind of, it's kind of there to them, you know? So I I don't know that we really should have that level of. Oversight into something specifically like that because that would, in my mind, be the exception of the rule.
Would would there be a way to look at these and. Do they fit under a certain criteria or not? For example, we could say, okay, there's safety issues. If there's a safety issue, then we should be involved. Okay, so if you go through those, some of those, there's no safety issue. I mean, public, a post office, there's no safety issue. That that can basically be anywhere. Um, but daycare center, there might be a safety issue. Because of the children, because of the loading, because of whatever. Uh, public utility, really, like you said, we have no jurisdiction with that because of the state or federal government. Uh, you know, i- i- is there, is there an overall kind of criteria that we could set? Or s- you know, stipulate in our own minds and say, okay, if it hits this threshold, then it should come in front of us.
Yeah, I I'd like to hear everybody's perspective on that because my, what comes to mind for me. Is it's, I look at it as the broader discussion that we've had the entire night, is what level of. Burden do we want to put on everyone to make that determination? And at the end of the day, should that just be a determination? That the business owner makes along with their clientele? Because I think. You can make the safety argument for any business. You could. No, no, I I think that's a good example.
Yeah.
But I think that you could definitely make that argument for anything, not just a daycare.
So I'm just on on record saying I think we need to keep daycare as a special permit. You don't feel we do? Comfortable consensus and well, let's move on to limited, you know, mind me.
Yeah, this was the one I guess.
Yeah, well, you know, if everyone feels that they don't have a concern, let's just say we're going to propose taking it off the list. I mean, I expressed my view, you expressed yours. We we have have different perspectives all the time, but it's a lot of respect, you know, when we do that with each other. I'd like to see daycare centers come before us.
I have a concern with uh number twelve.
Number one right now. Well, yeah, we we're going to take them off. I think we need to come to a consensus as to what's going to come off.
Okay.
We go one at a time and I think this would be more efficient.
Okay, Sean.
So do we want to leave daycare as a a special permit use or just take it off and it's a another commercially. Use in the the commercial zone?
I would stay with the special, the special permit.
We.
Since it's involved children, I'd go maybe safer still. Or a special permit, I'd even keep it involved.
I'm on the fence, but I feel like we're going to have that taken away from us anyway. It is a little by little our. State and otherwise are taken out here away from us anyway. That was a big subject that we're meeting. Two weeks ago.
Okay.
So let's leave one and.
Let's leave it there for now, Justin.
Okay.
Uh, public utility buildings.
Yeah, that's seemed like a controversial law. Anybody else disagree or agree?
And again, when you say off, Justin, you mean move it to site plan use now?
Site plan, correct.
Site plan, yeah. Post office, I would take off.
Yeah.
Try, let's try and get through these quickly at that note. Package store, we have limited commercial space. I think anywhere in our commercial space is heavily aligned with it. Right, so we can go to that.
Yeah, we can only add two anyways, though.
They're going to take that off?
Yeah, just do a site plan review. Outdoor recreation facility. Uh, let's talk about what that encompasses for a moment, because I don't know that everybody remembers the full. Full scope of what that is.
The motocross facility going to the dome.
Yeah. Yeah, I think leaving that as a special permit, that's that it encompasses that type of operation.
There can be noise.
Is there any other interpretation of what that encompasses? Because that was one that we were leaning towards taking off, but there was obviously some of the question about it, so.
Well, I think it came up in the context of the main moves in their application for the sluice and everything and. They had this minor structure they're going to add to an already elaborate. Site plan and we just felt horrible that it had to be a special permit.
But we've also had the benefit of seeing applications like Don has talked about there, which we can't really ignore. If there's some way to have seen it, doesn't mean it can't be approached either. Something else could come up. It could be shooting range, it could be. What else would I?
Well. I think if we had some opening to create. A caveat here to allow an exception where there is no impact on noise or adjacent neighbors.
Who's make that determination?
Well, they, if if they came before it and said, look, we're adding this thirteen foot long. From the middle of this five acre site and it doesn't make any noise whatsoever and there's no fumes, there's nothing.
So we're getting into the whole minor nature thing.
John, I think what we need is a special permit or what don't we?
Yeah, no, so so the the case, I I think, Rick, that the the. Situation you're describing is, in my mind, kind of the purpose of the special permit process. Which is to say, a determination of the, well, it depends questions, you know, so is. Is this outdoor recreation facility appropriate at this location in this circumstance? I think, you know, if the answer is, it depends, dot, 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 if you have a number of things. Then you're kind of thrown into a special permit category because it's a, it's a, you're leading to a judgment call with certain conditions. Um, so I think, you know, when you say if outdoor recreation, well, it depends on what kind and what location and how intense and what buffering and how close they are. That's kind of all special permit stuff.
When the main moving thing would be covered by our minor uh minor change.
Yeah.
That we already addressed. Okay, I'm sorry. So I would leave that in, forgot that. Uh, so outdoor recreation, we leave. And it's back to the assembly processing operations other than permitted under thirty one point one point one.
Which is what? Is this for commercial, right?
Yes, the commercial zone. What is it where we're thinking of no longer requiring a special permit for? What could be just a site plan review?
I would think if they wanted to put a giant warehouse in the rolling. That the neighbors might want to have some input.
Not if it's a site plan, not if it's all the regulations.
So one thing I think we could do with that because the note that we had on it was. Side requirements of of the facility. If we look at leaning towards a site plan, site site plans are objective standards. So manufacturing, assembly, processing operations under XXX square feet would just be site plan. Anything over would be special permit or would fall outside of those.
Well, we we have side yard, front yard, rear yard, which limits the size of the site.
Right.
Those are theoretically, you could build to those.
The warehouse, though, you can, you get the whole traffic thing. It's.
We're talking manufacturing. We're talking number six.
Number six, right. For good under thirty one. So do you want to take all the shackles off of manufacturing, assembly and processing operations? That anywhere in our commercial zone, if they think it's just a site plan review, that's worth the question.
Yes. But they could be.
They can do consideration noise.
Well, we want to do a site plan review or do we want to do a special?
Well, that's my question. If it's just a site plan review, there's noise.
Can we go look at noise? It was just not a factor. And you know, there was ma- maybe um. Uh, buildings over a certain size that will need a special permit. It's some, you know, if it's a billion dollar project, another six or eight hundred dollar. Eight hundred dollars in the process and some engineering fees will probably drop in the bucket. And and then we don't tend to to put those up on a whim.
Um, but to, on the opposite side of that too, you have to remember that some things could be categorized as manufacturing, could be very small operations. And do those people who have. Limited means to start their manufacturing business, should they have to go through a special permit? That's what we're trying to equally address. So if it's a, if if it's a site plan, it has to be of objective criteria. They meet these six things, site plan. If they're outside the scope of that, it can roll into a special permit. We need to remember that. So we have, it it can be a little bit touchy. If we look at an entire category of businesses and say, well, it could be this, it could be that, it could be a problem. Let's roll everything under that category to a special permit. So just keep that in mind.
So how do we make it easier for somebody to open a business in a way that doesn't hurt the neighbors? And and it's, you know, certain scope business, I'm very comfortable just they hope to do a site plan review. Um, much larger scope, I don't think I think that special permit is an issue whatsoever for somebody doing a larger. Larger development. You know, maybe the threshold is a ten thousand or twelve thousand square foot building. We put up to a ten thousand square foot building. I picked that number out of the air. John, any thoughts on that?
I missed the very last thing that you said, we, because we're still talking about manufacturing, right?
Yes, I, number six, manufacturing, assembly and processing. So if we want to get, take that out of the special permit category, is using a a building size threshold. A reasonable differentiator between needing a special permit and not.
I'm not sure, because the larger buildings are gonna be done by people with deeper pockets. Who are probably more inclined to do the right thing. And and not worry about the cost of mitigating noise or mitigating smells. Somebody that's on a limited budget is not gonna have where we're all to adjust some of those things and and if that falls below the threshold. You're gonna approve this.
John, have you experienced anything in in your tenure where we limited the ability to bring a business into town because of giving a special permit? A business of this sort that meets this description?
That you have not allowed?
Yes, but it that inquired and decided not to move forward, that made an inquiry. Because it required a special permit. And how do other towns look at this category?
Yeah, no, I I I think I think to that, to your last question, no, I I haven't had any any inquiries get spooked. But as to your first question, whether. The delineating sides is an appropriate um objective criteria, I think it is. I think that. You know, large, like obviously larger manufacturing, if you're dealing with something that's. Larger than twenty or thirty thousand square feet, um, to pick a number, you know, you're dealing with. Larger scale, you know, interior operations, more employees, more vehicles, you know, not only not only employees coming and going, but shipping. And and you know, the the impact on not only the immediate environment, but you know, the the road network and that sort of thing is increased. Um, so I I I think, you know. If you wanted to think about like site plan up to. You know, it's gonna be arbitrary, ten fifteen thousand square feet. I I don't think that's that's a terrible way to go.
And that would be that would be my preference as well.
Yeah, let's give it a number that we we aim at, but we can have a discussion during a public hearing for the. Regulation, but I think taking the shackles off somewhat for a smaller business is helpful, but. Goes beyond certain scope, like I would think special permit because of the traffic, the the points that John made very often. Why don't we put ten thousand square feet in there for now? Twenty thousand, so they go to twenty thousand square feet for a manufacturing building by 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 site plan review. How about that becomes a special permit?
What about what they're manufacturing?
For fireworks?
If if something is dangerous, we cover that later.
I shouldn't joke in the meeting, I apologize.
I imagine that that's kind of regulated, you know, those. It is, and there's number eighteen. And we would probably, it would probably benefit us to as far as the some of the objective criteria is roll eighteen into. Six, six. Because we're duplicating efforts here with some of this stuff.
So we we may even get rid of that because there's other regulations, um, federal and state. We can reduce it in a public hearing, but to expand to a larger number might be challenging, but twenty thousand square feet.
I think if if you're talking about larger facilities, you're talking about the big boys and they're used to special ones. You know, they've they've got designers, they've got attorneys that all make a living taking the pro- taking the project through the process and they they know that. They don't expect to build something in six months, they know it's gonna take a year for approvals, whatever. So um, I don't think it's a burden on anybody that's larger than twenty thousand.
Yeah, I don't just. How does this fit edition, it's a little money, I miss it somewhere.
Well, the building is going from fifteen to twenty one thousand, then it would require a special permit, because I think that the way that these would be phrased. Um, if they're they're. Establishing, we're gonna use bits beyond the the threshold.
There's not end of it, but when it starts to get into.
We're just saying we have a a regulation that's more simple than.
I I get that we're not taking that position on, but. So it looks like we do, if we do it that way, but I I say, I agree with it.
Yeah, so let's put, um, so leave six in there, um, um, for for um. Structures greater than twenty thousand square feet or. Twenty thousand square feet or greater, and and John, just come up with verbiage that makes sense as we. Put that in, you know what the intent is.
Okay.
Yeah, and let's see if we can combine six and eighteen, we'll review.
Okay, warehouse and number seven, warehousing and distribution, I'm sorry, this is your.
No, warehousing and distribution, I I kinda see that the same. Um, leaning towards a site land, but maybe with a square footage.
Yeah, you do the same thing, if if it's fairly small, it's gonna limit the amount of traffic and other things would be.
Well, the traffic's gonna be dictated by the state too. It's on state road, if it's above a hundred and ninety nine cars, I believe it is. Then I have to have an S T C approval, a traffic commission approval, so the state weighs in on the traffic aspect of it, so. Um, but again. Distribution, I think you're you're right. They could have trucks coming and going twenty four hours a day. We've had issues with deliveries at three o'clock in the morning to various places. And the residents complaining and things like that.
Remember that?
I remember that.
Oh, yes.
So I think um, leaving this in is a good thing.
Okay. What, so we're going to agree or we'll leave it in?
So we wanna leave it as is and not. Change it to any other.
Yeah, I think so.
Another concept that we talked about in our subcommittee meeting was where it is. Well, see, that's the other. When it applies to residential use. It's a different impact. Yeah, and then if it's not. And and I don't wanna keep this too long, but I, that's see, that's important. Somebody somebody said one time, why do we have a commercial zone? And we need, we need kinda need to have that discussion too, because if we have a commercial zone, should that negate some of these concerns to begin with? So I'm gonna give you an example, let's say that I'm in a residential zone. And uh, actually back up, I before zoning was around, there's a there's a commercial operation in a residential zone and its grandfathered in. And. Somebody builds a. New housing and and it's country zoning, it's family zone, and now that that business is in his grandfather into an art is art is own. And next to that business is an open lot, and someone puts a residential. How a house or a like building, uh, they they built residential homes, should that business? Because he's grandfathered in as a commercial business, have the right to be concerned about how does that go up? Next to him or her, because. He's a commercial business in a residential zone. I look at that as the same, if you're in a. Home in a commercial zone, even if you've been grandfathered in. What right do you have, and I'm not saying this to try to be negative, but like, is there a legitimate right that you can say? Really concerned about the traffic, I'm really concerned about the noise, I'm really concerned about this.
Because in almost every case where it's a residential use in a commercial zone. It's a grandfather residential use that existed prior to the advent of zoning or the change. Zone, so that was probably residents for a long time before that commercial use was established on that adjacent lot. And we owe some protection to the fact that. They bought a house, they expected to live there, that changed, and so. As I respect, we say, okay. It's commercial next door, the whole thing is commercial now, and you can sell out if you want, but you're there. And we're gonna pay a little extra attention to this commercial use next door to your.
It's not like you're bending over to do anything, but you consider there.
There, and that's that's irrational behind issues, using the term residential use. Because residential use by inference is almost always a grandfathered residential use.
Yes, of course.
Yeah.
So what happens if if the commercial zone of bots and RAs?
Well, it does.
It does. And then then I think there should be a public hearing. For the residents.
We've seen many cases where our interaction with commercial use. Very in close proximity to residential use, this has resulted in a moderation and a modification of procedure. So we minimize the impact on the residential zone.
And in theory, that should be something that's across the board regardless of business.
I think so.
So when we talk about, I I think that's a really, that is almost a separate discussion. Because I don't, what I would prefer, and I'd love to hear people's thoughts on this, I think if we go through this list. We're now, right now, we're on warehouses or whatever, right? So what if a warehouse is next to a residential zone?
Well, we may, we we could, if it's a special permit, we could say we wanna buffer. Vegetated buffer between the big warehouse and the same van half. That's not, that's not on the site plan.
Right, which would apply. If I'm carrying it right, it would apply to any business adjacent to a.
Not necessarily, not all subject, only the ones where we have a special permit. That's one of the reasons for a special permit is those subjective evaluation criteria that we can utilize. To create a more harmonious balance of use between one zone and another, where one might be negative impacted by the other.
So let's just back up going to number six, I hate to be a backwards guy, but. We're gonna go after number six, and we're talking about doing. Twenty thousand square foot manufacturing building that could potentially be directly adjacent to. Unexisting regularly a red residential zone. A residential use. We need to rethink that. Well, this is where it becomes problematic, because you can make that case, I can make it with a funeral honor, everything. So it would be much more beneficial and much more fair if we were to go, and I'm not saying it's sport or don't sport it. If we were to go in that direction, we really should say, any business that's adjacent to a residential zone has to go through a. Special uh, uh, permit application. Okay, and that is more along the lines of what I was pointing right out. When we had our subcommittee meeting, we talked directly about that as being an alternative. And maybe even putting that stipulation in some of these that we're taking out. And saying as long as they aren't directly adjacent to a residential.
Directly adjacent or within five hundred feet?
No, no, directly adjacent.
Yeah, it's gotta be directly adjacent.
Okay, directly adjacent.
Well, directly adjacent is is defined, and in some cases is defined as even being across the street. But I'm just, I mean, we can't, I mean, that's that was part of our discussion.
Yes, it it was, so it be. I I I think that's, that's very.
Not everything, I'm literally going back to the very first thing we did.
Talking about adding a caveat to a a residential use. In not just a residential zone, because we have so many grandfathered residential uses in commercial areas.
In the movement.
Because we changed our zoning over time and it said, you know, caused consternation for the people that are in. That owned up a family home for ninety years or a hundred and fifty years, and all of a sudden it's now a commercial zone. It's passed through multiple generations.
So residential use. Yeah, I think that would be the only fair way, not at this point, I'm not that politician, because I'll tell you like. It might might, so I'm the opposite of the spectrum, I think it's in a commercial zone. I I my preference personally would not take that into consideration, commercial zone is a commercial zone. But I think if if it would make everyone more comfortable, I think to make it fair, it would have to apply to every business. Adjacent to a residential. Residential use, and I would, my preference would be to separate that from what we're doing here, because. That I don't wanna muddy the waters of saying, well, these six things, they they need to really, like that's separate.
I think we're so cold that approach, so it's earlier.
So we do, right, when you have that say, yeah.
How how many residential use properties are there?
That's not a question to ask and get answered in the meeting.
Probably too many.
Yeah.
Probably too many, unless we model the approach that Justin is saying where we.
So it's just that, go going back to pre item one. And any um. Adding a, the 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 first item here would be um, any any application. Adjacent, immediately adjacent to a residential zone.
Yes.
Residential use.
Within the commercial zone.
Adjacent to, we include across the street, we would want it to.
Yeah.
We want it. So if we add that, then we can start taking other items off this list, we don't need a special permit. From that, because our concern is 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 governed by that first stipulation.
And that's that's to me would be the most effective way to do it.
Yeah.
And we add it separately, that's the first criteria, and then you can go through. Or we could go to the end of this list and say, any of these. Special permitted items. Could be done as a site plan review, it's not directly adjacent.
Or many of them. We can take a lot of these off of those and.
Would just be more general.
We're trying to open this up and make it easier to open the business.
There's a couple of them that we should say is special.
Does that change anyone's mind about the ones that we said should. Remain special permits, right now, we've got daycare centers, outdoor recreation facilities, warehouses, warehouses. If we were to add that regulation as a precursor to what we're talking about here, would that change anyone's mind? All right.
I think, are we on seven now or eight?
Seven, then when do we decide on seven? So we're saying we it would change number six. Well, six, we were gonna roll to the site line anyway, with a minimum square foot, eight twenty thousand square feet.
I'm under, yeah. In the flood zone. At the, interest that you're root sixty sixty thick.
Excuse me?
No, I mean, second, we're gonna need in Justin, you said?
Was that that?
Yeah.
If you guys want this.
Yeah, we're at, yeah. Okay, okay, eight, I think.
Yeah, eight, we should take out, unless anybody adjusts. Okay.
I think nine should stay.
Nine, we were gonna leave. Uh, ten, buildings, use facilities, estate, you guys get that should be moved altogether.
Eleven can come out because there's the citing commission that take all the sets, there's the citing commission. Govern all wireless telecommunications facilities. I know that they do cell phone towers, but what about a private microwave relay tower?
So my impression was that if. That part of the thing we need to look at is if it's in our jurisdiction to begin with, and that was one thing I was questioning, we didn't have jurisdiction.
If it's a cell phone tower, it's not our jurisdiction, I know that.
Yes, but what's your, what is your definition of facilities? Would that include a retail store?
No, it's a.
Like a like a cellphone, like a cellphone store?
Yeah.
Yeah, that could be a cellphone store, right?
That would be retail.
What would be your definition of facility?
That's retail.
Yeah, that would be retail.
I we can, I have the regulations, but we can look at the definition.
So the reason this was gonna be a radio station?
Could be a radio tower?
Yeah. So that should stay in special permit.
Yeah, so I think we need to leave it in. Where this regulation came from, prior to cell phones, when Sprint was proposing to put up a. A cellphone tower in place that we were not happy about. Um, we narrowly defined it as a microwave tower, because technically the um. The cell phones at the time were not radio waves, they were microwaves. And so we we the citing council didn't govern microwave towers at the time.
They're all electromagnetic waves.
What?
They're all electromagnetic.
I know, but there's there's a difference in their federal law, um, that the spectrum that. Uh, Sprint was proposing to use were actually in a microwave van, and it and it was. It was not governed by the citing council at the time. They had to come before us for a zone.
Yeah, that's what it is, they we need to look at the definitions before we make a decision, the equipment and structure of all the receiving and transmitting electromagnetic waves to the.
Television radio.
So, I mean, understanding that's the definition, would you guys prefer to leave it?
Well, some of those should come up, because again, we haven't said about. State, the state dictates that.
So just remove anything that's not within our jurisdiction.
Yeah, yeah.
And so we would change that that regulation also.
So you would you would add a caveat there that. Uh, wireless telecommunications facility is not subject to. The jurisdiction of the citing council?
I don't think we need to add it because we don't have jurisdiction.
Okay.
I mean, so that's gonna stay in schedule, if you think we should add it, I guess we could, but.
If you're right, yeah, that's what's going on. Okay, we agree on that one?
Yeah.
Okay, major home occupations and an existing single family, you want a business and a home in a commercial zone, that that might should have to be in there.
What does that mean, major home occupation?
Means you can have a, John, can you describe that?
Yeah, so we have, we have basically a three tiered home occupation. Hierarchy that, you know, the first tier is basically administrative approval, that's that basically it's invisible, you know, you're you're working on a computer. Hierarchy, that, you know, the first tier is basically administrative approval, that's, that basically it's invisible, you know, you're, you're working on a computer in a room in your house. You're the only employee, there's no sign, there's no nothing, um, second tier. Is, you know, you have a little signage, there's a little bit of interaction with the public, let's say, you know, an accountant office or a. You know, a small in-house, you know, a hair salon, where you see one or two people, you know, at a time or a couple of people a day. And it's basically no more traffic than, um, standard residential levels, that that could be a site plan. And then, um, of the higher level, which we call a major home occupation, would have, you know, multiple employees, maybe, maybe outdoor storage vehicles, say you have your. Construction contractor of some type, and you have, you know, people coming and going, um, you know, employee vehicles parking on your site. And, and so it would be special permit to ensure that, um, the, the overall impact of the proposed home occupation. Again, would not affect the, the overall residential character or function of the neighborhood.
We're allowing commercial buildings up to twenty thousand. That's what I'm saying, here's somebody who wants to do something in fifteen hundred square foot house.
Yes.
Yeah, we, we just.
So I'm sorry, what's the consensus? Move it to a special site plan?
Just to, just to remove it altogether, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Not following the, uh, did we call regulations for, uh, for the different classes of home businesses?
Yeah, that's in, that's in our race.
This is a question, I, I don't wanna treat, uh, somebody re, re, reusing a, a, a residential structure. That's below the threshold that we, if they don't bring a new structure, we wouldn't do anything with a site plan review.
Well, thanks, all the single-family homes that we have in commercial zones, those could very easily become commercial.
And if they're adjacent to a residential use, then.
So, yeah, that's all that. So we're taking number twelve off it. It becomes a site.
Yes.
So unless it's adjacent to a residential use.
If they're two houses, for example.
Okay.
The, the argument being, why would we wanna treat that differently than somebody with a vacant lot there? Building a structure brand new up to twenty thousand square feet. I just don't see the logic in, in treating it differently.
Okay, yeah. All right, well, so the thought with clubs and restaurants was to roll those two together. Um. Because the disruption or, you know, the, the operation of either one could be similar. And. The next question would be rolling into a site plan, which is what we were leaning towards in a commercial zone. Understanding that if we're concerned about disruption, that we have.
Have the caveat at the beginning about residential, they're uncovered.
Yes, yes. So would you guys be able to rolling those into one regulate, into one category, and then rolling it into a site plan? Knowing what we.
Well, basically, you said taking thirteen and fourteen now is what you're saying.
John, what, John, what's your thought on, uh, clubs and restaurants being merged together, you?
I, I, I think that's reasonable, I think, you know, I, aside from. Some hours of operations questions, uh, you know, they, they essentially function similarly. Um, the, the one, the one, you know, slight difference there, well, you know, especially because you have restaurants, including. Outdoor entertainment, patio dining, a micro brewery, I think particularly outdoor entertainment. Um, your, your, you know, your two major disruptors would be traffic and noise. Um, and I think the, 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 the argument for keeping it as a special permit. Is, you know, if you were, think about, like, some of the, the caveats and discussions we had about, um. The, the enter, the, um, wedding venue on Cards Mill, which is obviously I know is a residential zone. About noise attenuation and, and things like that. That's, that's the argument for it, but the, the counterargument is, again, we're in a commercial zone. Our entire commercial zone is along, you know, Route sixty-six east and Route six. Um. It's commercial, you know, noise and traffic is to be expected. You know, again, unless it's, unless it's massive, where you're talking two hundred plus parking spots, which would then trigger state traffic. You know, it's a commercial use in a commercial zone.
Maybe, I would suggest, it would make sense personally, just to get rid of thirteen and fourteen, they're already gonna be covered by adjacent to a. A residential use would be the only protection.
Sound, the sound is, is a whole different thing than, I mean, outdoor entertainment. Let me just give you a quick funny story that occurred this week. Steve Everett took a phone call from somebody who, I, I heard this firsthand, it was humor. He took a phone call from somebody who was complaining about. The wedding venue on Cards Mill Road, and how that, the approval of that was atrocious, because. The music is unbelievable, and they could hear it all the way up old romantic road and Cardville Road. And s, and Steve's response was, this hasn't been built yet, guy was listening to the shaboo stage.
So I gotta show you how private.
And, and including wine, brewery, restaurants. Sound can really travel, we hear. Down here on eighty-seven, we hear music from the Lions Club Park, where the big, when the big H is going on. Uber nervous there.
Yeah, so we.
It travels all that mark. We hear the music from the, from the, um, Lebanon Bear Browns. So what do you do about that? That what you're gonna do, no, I'm saying, how do you factor that in, and how do you factor outdoor? I, I don't know that you can in many of these cases, I, if it's, I mean, what are your thoughts, John?
Uh, uh, particularly about, about Walt's point about sound?
Well, when, when, uh, when a, a use like a restaurant or a club.
Yeah, well, so, I mean, we have, we have a blanket, um. Prohibition on, you know, the, the noise, odor, dust, vibration, radiation, and other nuisances. Um, so if, you know, if something is repeatedly a sound nuisance, just as if it was a dust or odor or, or radiation nuisance. That's enforceable.
Okay, so if we, if we leave this in here and has a special permit, then we could limit hours. Music outdoors. If it goes just as.
If it has a liquor license, the state does.
But we may, we, we could also be strict, we could also.
Uh, but we have to be careful with that, because what we're going back to is. Issues that join in residential use. Because who, who's really gonna be bothered by that, if we, if we get into arbitrarily saying, we're gonna limit your hours. To this, even though you're well within a commercial zone, is that right most to do? I'll, I'll tell you straight up, like, my, my opinion with thirteen and fourteen, if you even to merge the two. John is correct, we have nuisance ordinances or, or limits on, on noise, and just roll it into a site plan, if it's within a commercial zone.
So eliminate thirteen and fourteen.
Yeah, just roll it into a site plan.
So eliminate thirteen and fourteen.
Yeah.
I, I would be fine.
Long as we take into consideration that.
I'm gonna move this along, because I'd like to be out of here, but no way to invite.
Yeah, that's true.
Let's, let's move this along.
Well, luckily, the convalescent homes and funeral homes, any reason we couldn't put those into a site plan?
Those are, um, yeah.
Yeah, immediately adjacent, we have immediately adjacent, I, I'm fine with them. These site plans in a commercial zone.
Yeah.
Motel I would like to see kept, because there's a lot of outdoor activity potentially that, especially if it's a much larger motel.
Any contingency, yeah.
So.
Uh, can we roll eighteen into six? Because anything that's going to handle dangerous explosive fire hazards.
Yeah, scroll back to six.
Yeah.
Eighteen or nineteen, true.
Uh, yeah. Technically, six, eighteen and nineteen probably should be rolled into one, and we have to understand too, we're getting to a certain. Point where it's out of jurisdiction anyway, like, if some people's already radioactive. Don't in our town, like, that's not regulated by us, so, uh, are we trying to go through that?
We could put a sales tax on cannabis.
Yeah, um, so ca- cannabis, we just recently adopted that, we keep that.
Yeah.
And then the last one, multi-family development, which I had. Removed that completely.
Well, if I, if I might, not to, not to try to get you guys to go the other way, but, um, if, if a motel. Is a special permit use in the commercial district, I would think, uh, uh. Multi-family probably is too, because that's basically a, a year-round full occupancy motel with people there all the time. Um, in, in approximately the same density numbers. But, again, I, you know, I'm, I'm all for, I'm all for making it easy to do multi-family, but, um.
Well, if we could, look at hotel, hotels, anyone putting up a hotel, you're gonna be. There aren't any mom and pop hotels. So you're gonna be working with I H G, you're gonna be working with, like, big, big companies, and I don't know if any of them will be coming into Columbia and put up a hotel. And that would be kind of a separate. I, I would see no danger in rolling that into a site plan, because I think by the time it got to us, there would be other. Other issues. A hotel right in this Route six, and where's this, six and sixty-six intersection right there with Sir Yukon Eastern.
So, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, is the consensus that, that we're okay with rolling, uh, multi-family into site plan?
I am, if you guys are multi-family, I'm fine with the site plan.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so the one, and, and Justin, this is something we can work on, but, um, I think there are several. Uh, you know, at the, at the commission's determination type conditions within the multi-family regulations that we'll just have to tease out.
Right.
If then statements, but that's cool.
Justin, I'm just, we get for our section three on inspection.
Now, now knowing what a section three is.
So, do we, do we cover a family home in daycare?
That was, so we read that, John will have to kind of handle that, we're gonna have to rework our regulation due to the state regulations.
So, we'll, we'll cover those in time.
Yeah, that's not a danger.
Any communication reports?
Uh, nothing further, oh, I'm sorry, communication, um, just in, in, is, are we on correspondence, is that where we are now?
Say again.
Uh, under correspondence, we just have that one, uh, note about, um. There's a, there's a housing forum in T-Britain coming up, uh, October twenty-fourth, just as an F Y I, it's in your packets.
Okay.
And I have.
Thank you. Any open discussion? Okay. No audience, any audience of citizens? Um, nothing for executive session, I'll make a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Thank you.